Quiet, numskulls, I'm broadcasting.
I wanna talk to you. I wanna talk to you. Hey, boy, don't feel my world untrue. Yeah, I wanna talk to you. My world can be true if you do what I tell you to. I wanna talk to you.
Good evening, everybody. Welcome to another edition of Medical Marijuana Radio. It is Saturday night, the 21st of June 2014, the longest day of the year. And we're gonna have to go a little long tonight on the show because I have a lot of clips to play. The Department of Health, you know, held their public hearing on the new proposed rules on Monday. And of course, they promised to have video of that up for people that missed it by Wednesday or Thursday. And here it is Saturday, and of course, it is not up. So, you know, they don't really do what they say are supposed to do generally, and we all know that. But I have some clips because I used a little recorder and put it near the speaker, and I have a bunch of stuff that is very good. It was very emotional. I think the point was made by the patients and the producers that we're not gonna put up with the crappy proposed rules that will absolutely ruin this program. So, with all that being said, we will have people call in tonight to comment who were there. The phone numbers, 505-514-0098 is the main number, 575-5194MMJ. And we'll start taking calls after the first break. We also have an in-studio guest, a patient, a lovely patient named Leslie will be here to make comments with how she felt about what happened there. She was there at the meeting on Monday. So, first, like we do every Saturday night here in New Mexico, we read you the strain report. It's a list of strains that are available from the 23 producers, those, at least the ones that send us their current strains. And you have to shop around if you wanna get the strains that you're looking for that will help you. Ah-ha-ha, that is right. And starting with Canasudex in Albuquerque, on Tuesday, the 24th, they will have Zero Gravity, White Widow, Pineapple Express, Blues, Super Lemon Haze, Shit, and Fruit Spirit. That's Canasudex. Over at CG Corgan, they have 39 strains during this terrible shortage. The indicas are Blackwater Kush, Grape Ape, Kush Berry, Master Kush, NJ Style, meaning pre-ground from buds only. I don't know what that means, NJ Style. Is that New Jersey, or? I don't know what that means, but they're saying that it means pre-ground from buds, okay? Maximum Kush, Pineapple Thai. Their sativas at CG Corgan will be Alaskan Thunder F, Blue Dream, Green Crack, Shipwreck, Skunk Number One, Sour Chem. Their hybrids, which are sativa dominant, they have Cinderella 99, Deadhead OG, Flo, New Jersey Style, or NJ Style. Golden Goat, Green Crack crossed with Sour Diesel. New York Diesel, New Jersey Style. Pineapple Express, Sour Chem crossed with OG 18, Sour Diesel. Their hybrids with indica dominant are G13 Haze, God's Gift, Grand Platinum, Headband, Humboldt Grape, Jedi Death Star, Mango Kush, Mercury OG, OG Kush 18, Pineapple Kush, Purple Kush crossed with Headband, Skywalker OG, again, NJ Style, White Berry. And they have Funky, Uprise OG. Their CBD strains are Toto Madre, Canatonic, and Champagne. Again, that's CG Corgan. You want me to repeat those for you? Uh, no, listen to the replay. High Desert Relief this week will have AK-47, Blue, Blackberry Kush, Green Crack ISS, that's Island Sweet Skunk, LA Confidential Cheese, OG Kush, and Purple Kush, that is High Desert Relief in Albuquerque. Medzen will have AK-47, Bubble Jack, Super Lemon Haze, ESD, Trainwreck, Green Crack, Alaskan Thunder F, Big Bang, Mezhar, Bubba Kush, and Lemon Kush. That is Medzen. Minerva will have Harvest Blend, AK-47, Alaskan Thunder F, Blue Dream Sativa, Champagne High CBD, Critical Mass Indica, Dream Weaver, Grape Ape, Green Crack crossed with Sour Diesel, Hash crossed with Skunk Indica, Hog, Humboldt, Kryptonite, Las Cruces crossed with Pepper Boy, and Satori, which is a sativa. And again, that is Minerva. Over at New Mexican, they have some new cana caps, so check 'em out. 25-milligram cana caps, two of them, which would be 12.5 milligrams apiece, or $4.50. Two 25-milligram capsules, which total 50, would be $9. And here are their strains. Pebble Beach, Medicine Man, Raspberry Kush, G13 Haze, Medicine Woman, White Shark, Trainwreck, and CBD Skunk Haze. They also have High CBD AK-47 and High CBD Shark Shock. Their popcorn bud at $32.08 this week is Blue Dream, Medicine Man, and Medicine Woman. Okay, now, that was New Mexican. Now over to Natural RX, quite a list. White Berry, Grand Platinum, Kush Berry, Blue Berry, Purple Alien Fire, OG 18, Kush Berry, Mercury, Grape Ape, Purple Kush, LA Confidential. Their sativas, those are indicas, by the way, their sativas are Uprise OG, Skunk Number One, Blue Dream, Sage and Sha... Come on, these are too much to read, folks. Sage and Sour, Shipwreck, Sour Chem, Green Crack crossed with Sour Diesel, Golden Goat, X-rated. Their hybrids are Flo, Jack Frost, Pineapple Skunk, Champagne, Deadhead OG, Blue Cheese, Cookie, Skywalker OG, Sour Chem, Jedi Death Star, Girl Scout Cookie, and Rock Band. Their CBDs are Canatonic, and they have seven grams of a mystery mix for $65. That was Natural RX. Finishing up now, almost, New Mexico Top Organics this week will have Oracle, White Widow, Purple Blockhead, and Jack Herer, that is the bud. Over at Art Greenleaf, Cataract Kush, G13 Haze, Green Leaf, Kosher Kush, Super Lemon Haze, Sweet Tooth, and Wow. And finally, Sandia Botanicals, AK-47, Rascals OG Kush, and they have plenty of Sandia Splips. That is the strain report. Now, I wanna start playing you some clips that I pulled from a recording I made over at the DOH meeting. And we're gonna play some, and then we'll take a little break, and then we can play some more and also take your calls. So, first up, last week's guest on the show here at Medical Marijuana Radio, and it was Dr. Steve Genison, former head of the Medical Advisory Board for the Medical Cannabis Program. And Dr. Genison was highly involved, along with a few other speakers at the meeting on Monday, in getting the Lynn and Aaron Compassionate Use Act pushed and had, you know, and had Governor Richardson push it through. These, a lot of these people were responsible for the original act. So, here is Dr. Steve Genison with his speech to the Department of Health and the hearing officer that's going to hear all of the comments.
Thank you. Good morning. My name is Dr. Steve Genison. I'm a public health physician who lives in Dixon, New Mexico. I was the medical director of the Infectious Diseases Bureau of the New Mexico Department of Health from 1995 to 2010. My office was just down the hall in the other end of the south atrium. I was a member of Governor Gary Johnson's Drug Policy Task Force that originally proposed medical cannabis legislation, and I represented the Department of Health during the legislature's consideration of medical cannabis legislation from 2000 to 2007. When the Lynn and Aaron Compassionate Use Act became law in 2007, I was assigned responsibility for the implementation of the Patient Registry and Medical Advisory Board components of the program. During that time, the Department of Health actively engaged the participation of the Medical Advisory Board in promulgating rules governing the quantity of medical cannabis allowed patients and the number of plants permitted under a personal production license. Input from this panel of eight New Mexico medical specialists with expertise in medical cannabis issues was not only a good idea, it was and is required by law and by rules governing the medical cannabis program. When I retired from the Department of Health in 2010, I was appointed by the Secretary of Health to the Medical Advisory Board and served as its chair from 2010 to 2013. I remain actively engaged as an advocate on behalf of the thousands of New Mexico patients who I know have received great benefit from this program as was intended under the Lynn and Aaron Compassionate Use Act. This current rulemaking process is promoted by the Department of Health is a travesty of the solemn trust that the people of New Mexico have placed in the department to administer this program. The Department of Health not only did not actively engage the Medical Advisory Board in developing rule changes governing adequate supply in the patient registry, they did not even inform the Medical Advisory Board that such changes were being considered. The rule states that the Medical Advisory Board should consider these matters at twice-yearly public hearings. Did the Department of Health propose adding consideration of rule changes for adequate supply, personal production, plant limits, and patient registry to the agenda of the Medical Advisory Board twice-yearly hearings? They did not. Instead, the Department of Health scoffed at the law and chose to exclude this group of expert clinicians in the consideration of matters that are clearly within their purview. And as it... Okay. And as if that wasn't sufficiently disrespectful, the department posted an FAQ on their website that unambiguously communicated that the Medical Advisory Board had provided input into the rulemaking process when unambiguously they had not. Thank you.
Okay, so that was Dr. Steve Genison making some big points about the advice that the people who wrote these rules, who were Ken Grogel and Andrea Sundberg and Chris Woodward and probably some other people that told them what to do and which way to go. So, and of course, Andrea Sundberg was sitting there right in front of the speakers and Ken Grogel up on the dais. So, next up, these are not in order necessarily of how they spoke, I tried to keep it that way if possible, but next up is Dr. Laura Brown, who is on the Medical Advisory Board for the Medical Cannabis Program, and this is what she had to say about these proposed new rules.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Dr. Laura Brown, and I am a New Mexico physician and citizen, and I'm also a current Medical Advisory Board member of the Medical Cannabis Program. I'm glad to be able to speak at this meeting because I have some very serious concerns about these Medical Cannabis Program proposed rule changes that stem both from the content of the proposed rule changes as well as the process by which these changes were proposed. These proposed rule changes limit access to medical cannabis. They do not increase the supply of medical cannabis. They also impose financial and/or logistic restrictions for both New Mexico medical cannabis patients and the licensed nonprofit producers. Some of these restrictions have already been mentioned. They include a new 50% decrease in the mature cannabis plants allowed per patient producer, new annual patient registry fees, new monetary fines imposed on licensed nonprofit producers as disciplinary action, removal of patient extensions in cases of qualified patient or caregiver status changes, new required self-paid criminal background checks for both personal producing patients and all persons working with licensed producers, new concentrated cannabis-derived product THC limits, and addition of vague language in several places in the proposed rule changes that add more as-yet unspecified eligibility criteria, policies, and procedures which appear to give New Mexico Department of Health the ability to inappropriately further restrict access to medical cannabis. A further concern to me, the proposed rule changes remove many Department of Health medical cannabis programs safeguards which protect the rights of medical cannabis patients and producers. Some examples include, they've already been mentioned, some of them, removal of the biennial medical cannabis program assessment report clause, removal of the New Mexico Department of Health Administrative Review Committee for application denials, license producer denials or suspensions, additions of rules permitting producer license suspensions without prior hearing or record review, removal of the deficiency concept that pertains to New Mexico Department of Health violations of the medical cannabis program requirements, removal of the section entitled denial of an initial patient or primary caregiver application, removal of administrative review previously required in cases of denial of initial medical cannabis producer licenses, and finally, removal of rights to administrative review in cases of suspended enrollments of qualified medical cannabis patients or primary caregivers. As a New Mexico physician who has seen how medical cannabis greatly improves lives, I feel compelled to speak out when I see politics like this, like these proposed rule changes appearing to inappropriately infringe on the rights of those who are suffering from qualifying medical conditions, those New Mexico citizens who have benefited from medical cannabis already, and those who could benefit in the future. Secondly, the process by which these proposed rule changes... May I have... Mm-hmm, yes. These proposed rule changes occurred without Medical Advisory Board input, which has statutory responsibility for advising the medical cannabis program on issues related to adequate supply of medical cannabis, including personal production licenses and medical cannabis patient registry, in addition to its responsibility of hearing petitions to add new medical qualifying conditions. There is a published current crisis-level medical cannabis shortage in New Mexico. I strongly recommend that there is an evidence-based approach to any proposed medical cannabis rule change that involves actual and extensive consultation with the Medical Advisory Board and other stakeholders, especially as it relates to ensuring adequate supply of medical cannabis in New Mexico. Thank you for your attention.
Okay, that was Dr. Laura Brown. So, what I wanna do right now is take a short break. I'm just gonna take one break today. This is gonna be it, and then we're going to go a little bit long, but we'd like your calls. So, if you wanna call in, if you are down there and you wanna comment on what you saw, heard, and felt, the numbers are 505-514-0098, and also 575-5194MMJ. You can also Skype MMJ Radio. So, we'll be right back and play some more clips after this. Hi, as you know, over the next few years, the cannabis industry is going to explode into a multimillion-dollar industry. 420webdesign.com is your affordable design provider. 420 Web Design prides themselves on fair prices and a grounded staff. They listen to their ganjapaneurs' website needs. Getting into the marijuana industry doesn't need to break your bank. Our sites come with tons of features, just a few of them include responsive designs for mobile viewers, easy-to-update platforms, built-in SEO and SMO tools, enterprise-level security, video tutorials, database backups, Google Maps, onboard analytics, and much more. This is backed by a decade of website design and development experience. For all of your 420 web design needs, go to 420webdesign.com. Again, 420webdesign.com. Check 'em out.
Sirius Seeds is your source for quality cannabis and sativa seeds. Sirius Seeds are the creators of legendary strains like AK-47, Bubble Gum, Chronic, Cali Mist, and White Russian. The AK-47 is probably the most awarded strain on the planet. The high THC content of AK-47 makes it the perfect medical strain for patients seeking quick pain relief. Cali Mist is almost pure sativa. Female medical cannabis patients have reported that this strain helps relieve menstrual cramps. Sirius Seeds just acquired...
Yeah, I can hear you. Yeah. Okay, sure. Sure.
The fine folks at Sirius Seeds strive to breed the best cannabis genetics that they can find, so patients can rely on the effectiveness of their medicine. Go to SiriusSeeds.com to grow your medicine. That site again is SiriusSeeds.com.
Hi, this is Larry Love from Medical Marijuana Radio. Please listen to this important information about a great device by MagicalButter.com to make your oils, tinctures, and butter.
Magical Butter is a device with a microprocessor-controlled program sequence designed by a scientist and a chemist to precisely extract the benefits of various herbs. We believe in herbal remedies and using pharmaceutical pills only when medically necessary. Our device is simple to use. Combine herbs with butter or oil, press a button, and walk away. Magical Butter does everything else. It grinds, heats, and stirs. Please browse our site to discover how to eat the treat. Thank you for your support, and have a magical day.
Again, for your tinctures, butter, and oils, that's MagicalButter.com. This is a great appliance. Use coupon code LOVE to get $20 off.
THCF Medical Clinics are the premier physician's clinic in the United States. THCF has offices all across the United States from Hawaii to Michigan. THCF Medical Clinics has helped approximately 150,000 patients obtain their medical marijuana permits to legally possess, grow, and use medical marijuana. If you have chronic pain, multiple sclerosis, or any other neurological degenerative disease, or if you have heavy gastrointestinal disorders such as GERD, irritable bowel syndrome, or if you have AIDS, cancer, spastic disorders, seizure disorders, or glaucoma, call us at 1-800-723-0188, or visit us online at hemp.org. Again, the number is 1-800-723-0188, and the site is H-E-M-P dot O-R-G.
Okay, we are back, and we do have a caller on the line. I'm just going to bring him up, and... Hi, Bob, I have you on the line. I just wanna keep you on hold for three minutes, I guess it's a couple more minutes. I wanna play Cisco... No, it's good. I wanna play Cisco McSorley's speech. It runs about six minutes, and then we can comment on it, and then we'll play some more clips. So, here is Senator Cisco McSorley of New Mexico, who was very, very upset. He is one of the main proponents, you know, out there in government for this program. So, here's what Senator had to say to the hearing officer and the DOH employees? I guess they're employed by them.
Thank you, Madam Hearing Officer. This program was supposed to be about the patients. The Department is destroying that program. I had prepared remarks today, but what's happened here today, I've thrown out those remarks because I want you, Madam Hearing Officer, to hear what is happening. This is a violation of the Open Meetings Act. You are in violation. The Department was told they needed to change this place, and they wouldn't do it. There are people being... There are people outside who cannot come in because the state police are holding them away. The Open Meetings Act says that people must be able to observe and attend the meeting. They can't observe, they can't attend. You are in violation of the Open Meetings Act. Please, please, I don't wanna go over my two minutes. My constituents, my patients are waiting outside. I was told by the Department to come in, and I came in with mixed feelings, and patients gave up their right to come in, to let me come and speak. They thought it was important, and only then did I come in. The police are blocking the public's access to this meeting. There was, also, I wanna say, in my opinion, there was no meaningful input into the writing of these regulations. The Department has known for years that there was a problem with the amount of medicine for these patients. I personally went to the Department, not the Department asked me, but I went to the Department as soon as I saw the survey results, and I told them, "You need to do something immediately." They said, "Oh, no, but we're rushing to do it." Only months and months later did they publish these regulations, and these regulations... The irony of the whole idea of having a survey that says we are short on product, and what do they do? They produce regulations that are going to limit the patient's ability to get their own medicine. That's bizarre. It is bizarre. And I think the whole idea that they said they had public input, whatever public input they must have had, they must have totally ignored and thrown in the garbage, because the public input that I know about of people that took the time to go to the Department was totally ignored. It was totally turned away. This Department wrote these regulations without listening to the public. These regulations, as far as I can tell, were written behind closed doors. They were written by a small group of people who we don't even know, and I wanna make sure that people in the audience know, no legislators were involved in the writing of these regulations. The legislature is in favor of patient access. What I find ironic, oh, and by the way, the legislature and the Committee on Human Services, Health and Human Services, has already written a letter asking the Department to stop this meeting, that they, as a legislature, have no ability to have any input into this because the regs were published after we adjourned and before this meeting is being held, before we're having our interim committee meetings, and so there's no ability for us to have any access unless we come here today and come through the police line. This is so ironic that all this is going on when the federal government is saying... And the federal government was the sole reason for having plant count limitations, the sole reason. And now the federal government is saying, "We are not concerned about those plant limitations." The idea that this Department would have the highest tax in the nation on patients, and I don't know if you know this, but the overwhelming majority of these patients are Medicaid. This medicine is not paid for by health insurance or Medicaid. They must pay for it on their own. And the more fees that you put on this program, the less able these patients are to afford their medicine. Furthermore, the question becomes in my mind, how many millions of dollars will these fees generate, and what is the Department going to do with it? Not once in the history of the Department did they come to anybody in the legislature and say, "We need more money." In fact, the only amendment to the Act I sponsored at my request, and the Department agreed to it, that all fees collected would go to the program. At that time, we figured we would collect about $300,000, and at that time, two years ago, when I passed that legislation, that all the fees would go to this program, we were told by the Department that that would be sufficient to run the program. Now, we have millions of dollars in new fees, as best I can tell, and we don't know what they're gonna do. They're certainly not, if the fees are gonna go the way the writing of these regulations are gonna go, it's not gonna be for the benefit of the patients. So, Madam, please have some courage. Tell this Department that it's out of control and that you will not be a part of allowing these regulations to be put into the regulatory scheme, that we have to stop this process, we have to start over, we have to open the process to the Advisory Board, and to the patients, and to the producers, and the general public who desperately want this program to succeed, and which program is being crushed by people acting behind closed doors.
That was Senator Cisco McSorley of New Mexico, who is very passionate about this medical marijuana program. He's been working on it since the beginning, and I think he just read the riot act to the people up on that panel. So, let me get Bob on the line here real quick. Okay, Bob, you're live on Medical Marijuana Radio. Thanks for calling in tonight.
Yeah, absolutely.
So, give me some of your feelings about what happened on Monday. I know you drove up very early in the morning from hours away from Santa Fe to speak and to listen and to be a part of this. Tell me how you felt, you know, when you got there and listening to some of these speakers.
Well, one, it was very emotional. I think you could tell the whole crowd as a whole was very vested. I think, for the most part, the crowd was very polite, but also boisterous about their positions, which was good. But, you know, I think speaker after speaker got up just to talk about the travesty that is starting to try to play out as far as what the Department has done and how they've done about it. It's, you know, it's, I think Cisco's exact words were, "The Department is out of control," and I think that sums it up. it up.
Absolutely. They were out of control, and they still are out of control, and they'll still be out of control as long as the people that are involved in running it stay there, because obviously, we've seen the position of Ken Grogel and Andrea Sundberg, and, you know, it's not going to change. This is who they are. This is what they decided to do with the program, and probably were pushed in some direction from some office up above them, because, you know, they're just not sitting down and making up this stuff without some direction that needed to be taken by the current administration. So what I'd like to do next... Bob, do you want to just hang on for a while? I'm going to play a couple more clips. So, okay, I'm going to, while I... Play the clips, I'm just going to put you on hold. And so this next one, that I'm going to put you on hold for a second, you know, during this, Bob. But it's going to be... The name of the medical marijuana program here, medical cannabis program, is the Lynn and Aaron Compassionate Use Act. And Aaron, who it's named after, this next speaker, and I'll tell you honestly, I was in tears, and the next speaker is Aaron's mom, who was very eloquent and very emotional. And here's Aaron's mom.
Good morning. My name is Debbie Armstrong, and this morning, I'm here as a mother, most specifically as the mother of Aaron, for the Lynn and Aaron Compassionate Use Act. Don't... I don't want to forget the people who worked for decades to create a program that works with compassion for people to access, who are suffering to access something that works for them. And many people may not know about Lynn Pearson anymore. He was a young man in the '70s that lobbied hard to get a research program for medical marijuana at the university. It, when funding ran out, it became a defunct law, was revitalized to create this program, and my daughter, Erin, helped to get it passed, and the Senate kindly renamed the Act, the Lynn and Aaron Compassionate Use Act. This is about compassion. It's about patients' rights. It's about access to medicine that works for people. And these regulation... Proposed regulations have done nothing but create barriers to access, making it more difficult for patients, making it impossible for some patients, and it has decreased... It will decrease the supply, not increase the supply. That's been the problem over the last few years, is the lack of supply, not adequate supply, and needing to expand the producer's ability to provide. And instead, you've made it more difficult while pretending to make it expand it. It really will make it more difficult, and you've decreased what an individual or their caregiver can grow, and then created additional barriers by getting background checks, licensing, paying fees. Patients don't have to pay a fee to get a prescription drug. Why would they have to pay a fee to get this? It's absolutely ludicrous, and I'm horrified by what the Department is doing to create barriers for access. Where is the compassion? Please, go back to the drawing table. Trust the people that you have on your Advisory Board, who you didn't consult. Trust the patients that need it. Trust the producers to give you the input to make this right, to make it work, and to expand its use. Create the supply to meet the demand, not the opposite. Thank you.
Okay, we're back, and we're back with Bob Boylan, who's online, and he's, of course, 420 Web Design, one of our wonderful sponsors. And also in studio, I have Leslie Jowers, who is a patient and a patient advocate and a program advocate. Hi, Leslie.
Hi, Larry.
Thanks for coming over tonight and speaking up. Bob, any comments, or Leslie, on Aaron's mom's little speech here? It was very emotional. I mean, I really was teared up that day with her. This is why we have the Lynn and Aaron Compassionate Act, is because of Aaron and Lynn Pearson. So what I'd like to do, this... The news channels, 13 and 4, didn't do very much at all, sort of played little tiny clips, and what I'd like to do, one of the most emotional and rising applause was from Paul Culkin, who is a patient and has been around this program since the very beginning, and he really stirred up the crowd. And here's what Paul Culkin, who is a veteran, had to say to the Department of Health Medical Cannabis Program, and then we can talk about that.
Hello, can you hear me? My name is Paul Culkin. I'm a disabled veteran. I'm 100% disabled, PTSD. I came back from Iraq. I had COPD. I've been in this program since 2009 with Melissa Mylum. Used to drive around in a car handing out medical cannabis to people. I cannot frickin' believe this kind of crap, as far as this frequently asked question thing you send back to us. This is BS. I was a staff sergeant on an EOD team. I was a team leader. I served as the protection of the President of the United States and the Secret Service as... Excuse me, I wasn't in the Secret Service. I worked with the Secret Service as a team leader. I have a top-secret clearance, and these rules for personal production license count cuts, and these background checks, and all this other crap is bullshit. I'm sorry, but it's bullshit.[1007.23][1007.23](Applause) I was given the authority and the respect when I was in the military. As soon as I got out and I said I wanted to use this medicine, all of a sudden, now I'm a criminal. And I'll tell you what, Chris, you're an attorney. You know there's so many damn holes in this program right now. I think the patients should start a class-action lawsuit against the Department of Health, because this is bullshit.[1028.83][1028.83](Cheering) You know it, you know that. Where's the protection? Where's the EPA? Where's the... They're making medical edibles that aren't even... Don't even have the medicine in it for these patients. I've seen plenty of patients on chemotherapy eating frickin' glycerin drops with nothing in it! And these people have taken the authority and delegated responsibility, and that's bullshit. I learned in the Army, you cannot delegate responsibility. You only can delegate authority. You need to take responsibility on here for the patients that are being hurt by your program. I'm sorry for getting upset, but that's frickin' why I'm in the program![1067.65][1067.65](Cheering) Love you guys, take care.
That was real emotion from someone who there are thousands and thousands of Paul Culkins in this state and in every state, people that went overseas to fight these crazy wars that we have our asses in. And that's who Susanna Martinez, and Ken Grogel, and Andrea Sundberg, and Chris Woodward are hurting, people like Paul Culkin, and there's thousands of them. Bob, what do you think?
I think it's dishonorable to our veterans, you know? They've given their hearts and their souls so we can have all of our rights, and they just want to come home, have access to their medicine, and pretty much be left alone, and, you know, not engage in any wrongdoings or have any problems with anyone. Then they have to be rewarded by being instigated by a Department who just chooses to blatantly ignore their own rules and regulations they're supposed to adhere to. Which, there's the irony in the whole thing, is they want us to listen to them, but they think they have to not even be accountable for the existing rules and regulations they're supposed to be accountable to.
Right, absolutely. I agree with you, and we know that the people that run the DOH and the MCP are not accountable to the original rules of the Lynn and Aaron Compassionate Act, and they just don't respect them, and we'll talk more...
And avoiding their Advisory Board and telling us as patients that they're doing things for our well-being, that is so... That is such a slap in all of our faces. How, if they were on the other side of the coin, there's no doubt, as individuals themselves, they wouldn't take something like that being presented to them, you know? So it's so hard to swallow when, you know, they themselves, if it was put back on them, you know, they wouldn't tolerate it.
These rules that they wrote are... And all these restrictions are because they are paranoid about what might happen. They're not trying to fix something that's happening. If they were doing that, they would have fixed the shortage and the shortage of producers and everything years ago. They are worried about patients, sick people, who need their medicine and grow their own, like Paul Culkin and others, that maybe they're going to grow some and give it to their friends or sell it to their friends. They're worried about what might happen. They're not worried about what's happening. Now, Leslie, I know that you had mentioned to me that you were a little bit disturbed about the way the networks, local networks here in New Mexico portrayed people at the hearing, and Paul Culkin was one little clip. Tell me, tell me what hit you about that? What's that?
Well, first of all, if you've seen the little clip on every station, there... He's up there in a bright yellow t-shirt?
I think he had a black t-shirt on with some big, heavy writing on it, yeah. It was some yellow writing, I believe.
They only show you the one part of the clip where he gets upset, and it's like, "Okay." And all of their other reporting, let's just say there was a lot of facts left out, and I just didn't appreciate how we are... I don't know. I feel like they should have had more people there covering the story.
Right, right. I was pretty disappointed in the fact that there was only one news crew there, and then I guess 13 and 2, I think maybe they share the same news or something like that. But Channel 4 didn't send anybody. They just, you know, played some... They showed some graphics and then talked over it. So really, it didn't really get the coverage. So that's why Medical Marijuana Radio is here, because this is where you're going to get the coverage. And the other people that are covering this issue really well is the Santa Fe Reporter and Peter St. Seer. And later on in the show, I can't, you know, I can't not end this show without playing that nine minutes of Peter's full interview with Ken Grogel after the meeting happened. It's quite incredible, and I will be playing that in a little while. But Bob, I'm going to... You have any final words, Bob?
No, it's just, it was great to see everybody show up, you know? At least they know that we're not going to go down without a fight.
Absolutely. And people did show up.
That's important, absolutely.
It's absolutely important, and people did come out. I was very happy with the amount of people, you know? We needed people outside as well as inside, and that part of it went off really well. Thank you, thank you, Bob, and we'll talk to you real soon.
Thanks, Larry. Have a good night.
We have open lines if you would like to call in, 505-514-0098. What I'd like to do now is play another clip from another one of the people that works with the DPA and other organizations, that's been working on the Lynn and Aaron Compassionate Act here in New Mexico for, you know, seven, eight, nine years. This is Valerie Hubbard.
Hello, my name is Valerie Hubbard. I am a patient. I'm an advocate, and I was a part of passing the Lynn and Aaron Compassionate Use Act. Let me get my glasses on and my microphone straightened out. Okay. I want to address a paragraph that's taken from the question-and-answer sheet page posted on the Department's website. This, since all of you have the fact sheet, you can read this. You can read this from your fact sheet. I won't have to reread it to you, but it's going to start with, "Is it true that the Department of Health developed these regulations without any input from producers and stakeholders?" I kind of have to say it's true, but I'm going to take each line. "In 2013, the patient survey..." I do know patients that receive surveys, and other than the supply crisis that was addressed, it is hard to believe that patients asked for these punitive and painful proposed rules and regulations. "Input from producers." "To address the supply crisis in the state, producers did ask for an increased plant count, and producers did ask to increase the number of new licensed producers. Was there other input from the producers that we as patients should know about here?" Three. "Information received from the Medical Cannabis Advisory Board." "Medical Cannabis Advisory Board was never consulted about these proposed regulation changes." "Professional organizations and advocacy groups." Who are these organizations and advocacy groups? Please post their names on the website so that we may all know who they are. "Medical cannabis states." "Are these states as large as New Mexico? Are these states as rural as New Mexico? Are these states as poor as New Mexico?" Please post these states on the website so that we may know you made a thoughtful and just comparison for us. "Last but not least, daily communication with various stakeholders and interested parties." Please let us know who these stakeholders and interested parties are that you had daily communication with. Please list these stakeholders and interested parties on the website. We are the patients. We are the majority stakeholders here, and as the majority stakeholders, we have the right to know, and we have the right to have these questions answered. Consult us. It is essential that we go back to the drawing board. Thank you all for coming out and supporting it now.
Okay, that was Val Hubbard, and eloquently put. I had the opportunity to speak as well, and here is my 1 minute and 41 seconds. I needed to get right to the point and try to fix the problem that we all have.
Hi, my name is Larry Love. I'm a patient, and I'm a patient advocate and a advocate for this program. I want to thank everybody for being here today, but you know what? You didn't have to come if these people up here did their jobs right.[1599.51][1599.51](Cheering) Okay? The people that run the Department of Health are really not making it work like the Lynn and Aaron Compassionate Act is its intent is supposed to be. This hearing is about rules. Rules are put in place to create order where order is necessary. Many of these new rules are not necessary. These proposed rules cause problems, not solutions. The people at the DOH and the MCP have not complied or carried out the intent of the rules of the Lynn and Aaron Compassionate Act. I personally know that Mr. Grogel, the director of the program, does not respect the rules of this program. I know that because he facilitated my removal illegally from one of the licensed nonprofits, and he knew it, and he let it happen. He does not respect these rules. For Mr. Grogel's blatant disregard of the rules, and Mr. Grogels, or Groggels', obvious disregard in carrying out the intent of the Lynn and Aaron Compassionate Act, his lack of respect for the welfare of the patients, and the new proposed rules that he is obviously responsible for by being the director, I ask for his resignation or immediate firing.[1679.15][1679.15](Cheering)
And I invite Mr. Grogel to come on the air and resign right here in front of all of us. And Andrea should do the same thing. Anyway, I was happy to be able to speak and to get my point across. A lot of other people spoke as well, and one of the most outspoken people all along, and of course, works very hard behind the scenes, is the director of New Mexican, Len Goodman, who is also a patient, and he has been, from the very beginning, someone who has tried to have a relationship with the Department of Health and Health and the Medical Cannabis Program. And he was speaking to them, and so were other people, like Willie Ford, who I'll play in a little while, who has our green leaf. They were in touch with the DOH, and it seemed to me they felt confident that good things were going to happen before these proposed rules were published, but it didn't happen. And what Val Hubbard said a few moments ago about not listening to the people, and who were these people that they did listen to, that's what this whole thing is about. They threw out all the real input that they should have had. Here's Len Goodman.
My name is Len Goodman. I'm a patient. I'm also executive director of New Mexican Natural Medicine, who happens to be currently the only nationally certified producer by Americans for Safe Access Patient-Focused Certification. And that includes certification for current good manufacturing practices, compliance with all rules and regulations, and patient care. I'm also a founding director, one of the original founding directors of the National Cannabis Industry Association. I'm a member of the Drug Policy Alliance of New Mexico's Medical Cannabis Strategy Team. I've given... Medical Cannabis Strategy Team. I've given expert testimony on behalf of Marijuana Policy Project in legislative committees, working on proposed medical cannabis regulations in several New England states. I'm a member of the American Herbal Products Association's Cannabis Committee, in the Working Groups for Cultivation and Distribution, and developed their current good manufacturing practices and compliance guidelines. I've been a speaker at three national cannabis conferences. Those are just some credentials, so I hope it'll lend some credibility to what I want to say. We've turned in a very large document through Jason Marks that I think addresses most of the concerns that we have for patients and producers. I want to address the FAQ sheet. That sheet is inaccurate. I want to address two, I wrote up comments to it, provided them to the department, they were apparently ignored. I want to address two issues on it, some of which have been addressed a little bit already. The first two FAQs are simply not true. Quote, "Are the proposed rule changes meant to lead to a reduction of product?" Quote, "LMPPs, licensed nonprofit producers, would be permitted under the proposed regulations to triple the number of plants that they grow." Second, "Will fees for all nonprofit producers increase under the proposed regulations?" Quote, "No, nonprofit producers who choose to remain at the current plant count would pay essentially the same fee as they pay now. Those producers, such as New Mexican, who currently keep seventy-five plants in flower, would be able to double our production, but it would be at three times the cost. If New Mexican were to keep our current production level, our fees would double from what they presently are." And we're talking about going from thirty thousand to ninety thousand, or thirty thousand to sixty thousand. It's not equitable. Excuse me one minute, I've lost my place. "Those producers, such as Minerva Cannabis Group, who currently keep approximately one hundred plants in flower, would be able to increase production by fifty percent, but at a three hundred percent increase in cost. If Minerva chooses to keep its current production level, their fees will triple." Those producers, what did you say? That's two minutes? I have to say, I object to this. This was not included in the original proposals. There are things that must be said, that I have to say, and it, I'm not a lawyer, as Mandy is, but it seems to me it's a violation of the Public Act. I would like to summarize quickly if I can. I will abide by your decision.
I would ask that you summarize the benefits.
Okay, the producers have only two primary concerns in trying to cater out our mission to fulfill the mandate under the Linin Air and Compassionate Use Act. First, to be able to produce enough medicine to supply our patients and to gain efficiency of scale in order to grow into allow a real market to function and reduce prices to patients. One half of our patients are on disability, limited income, and Medicaid. We were excited to get additional plant production to reduce costs and reach our goals. That's not going to happen under these rules. As producers, we were not given a seat at the table to provide professional input. Most other states with cannabis regulation hired professionals at costs of upward to one hundred thousand dollars each to provide needed input. The New Mexico producers have that professional knowledge and experience, offered that to the department at no charge. That offer was refused. Why? We demand participation in the rulemaking process. The New Mexico medical cannabis producers are committed to fighting for our patients and their producers, and we will not allow, we will not allow these proposed regulations to be promulgated. We will fight on all fronts, using all legal means, until all suffering patients, until the department understands and accepts its obligations under the Linin Air and Compassionate Use Act to provide compassionate care for all suffering patients. We will not stand down from our posts until we can truly say, "Mission accomplished."
Okay, that was Len Goodman from New Mexican, and he mentioned Jason Marks, who is an attorney, and he spoke, the, a group of nonprofit licensed producers or commercial producers, whatever you want to call them, hired Jason in regard to this disastrous rule proposal. So here is Jason Marks.
Good morning. I'm Jason Marks, an attorney representing the cannabis producers of New Mexico, which is an association of sixteen nonprofit producers. Madam Hearing Examiner, before I went into private practice, for eight years, I sat in your seat, and I don't envy you today. I don't know if I would trade places with you from a personal perspective because you are in the middle of a slow-motion regulatory train wreck right now. Maybe from a policy position, I might want to trade places with you to make sure that this gets done right. Madam Hearing Examiner, in the Linin Air Act, the legislature said that a patient may be registered upon certification of his or her physician, that he or she has a medical condition that qualifies and would benefit from medical cannabis, period. But the department went on and said some conditions require two doctors, and some require proof, not merely that cannabis is beneficial, but that other therapies don't work. And then, contrary to law, the department also inserted itself into the doctor-patient relationship, saying it could overrule a patient certifying physician's own medical judgment. The department now wants patients to pay fees that are not authorized by the act. The department asserts the power to invade homes and police whether patients are violating the act's safe harbors. The DOH calls it monitoring. I call it illegal, and so will the courts. The act says that any natural person or corporation can become a licensed producer, but the department restricts producers to nonprofits. Now it is trying to impose a multitude of new and unnecessary and unjustified restrictions on business practices and strategies that's just going to increase prices. Cannabis should be tested to make sure it's safe and effective for patients, but the department's proposed regs require very expensive routine testing, not related to any actual risks. Our group had a survey done that confirms that cost is the primary reason that patients drop out of the program. We brought on an economist from U and M who confirms that the rule changes will significantly increase production costs, which in turn will push patients out of the program, either to suffer without relief or go back to the black market. In total, we're turning one hundred and eighty degrees from our legislature's intention enacting the Linin Air Act. Here, benefits that our government, our legislature intended to be taken, are intended, are being taken away wholesale. You're hearing today from probably hundreds of New Mexicans about the human cost of the department's rules and why those rules cannot stand. You will read in here, and you don't need to take complete notes, we've got seventy pages about these rules. You'll read why these rules cannot stand legally from an administrative law point of view. But most importantly, as you've heard, Mr. Grogel, are you still here? Madam Hearing Examiner, Department of Health, you said this is a process. Let's make it a process. Let's start over.
Again, that's attorney Jason Marks, who's representing sixteen of the twenty-three licensed, commercial, nonprofit producer, dispensary, grower people. Last but not least, of course, there's a lot more, and I do advise that if and when the Department of Health puts up the video, that you do watch it. There was a lot of very emotional remarks and speeches by patients that are very important. I just don't have time to play a lot of those. But what I'd like to do, before I play the nine-minute Ken Grogel, Peter St. Seer interview, I just want to play one more from one of the producers. This is Willie Ford, who's been very active in this program, and he is the director of R. Greenleaf in Albuquerque, and this is what Willie had to say.
William Ford, executive director of R. Greenleaf Organics. We're one of three organizations that claim to be the largest producer in the state. A year ago, I sat with the Secretary of Health, Red Award, and described to her the impending supply crisis, as I know a lot of other producers did. She seemed committed, and we saw some action. We saw some movement in the department moving towards helping to solve the supply crisis. They did the right things. They had a survey, they did the research, they developed a plan, they had the important factors that had to be addressed in order to change the supply crisis and provide safe access for more patients. As the executive director of an LMPP, that's my number-one issue, is providing safe access to medicine for patients. The more patients I can, I can reach and help, the better. That's the only charge I have. Unfortunately, what's happened is, and I have to say, Ken, what happened? You know, we all thought that you guys got it and that you knew what needed to be done. The plant increase needed to be put in place. We agreed to increasing the fees, if necessary, and more applications for our producerships needed to be accepted. I've gone to, I've gone ahead and prepared for the, for the hearing officer and for the program, the actual rules as they should have been proposed. These rules here are ready to go, ready to be promulgated. All they do is increase the plant count, increase the fees, and open it up for new applications so that we can produce more medicine for an increasing base of patients. I asked the, I asked the program and the hearing officer to please, do not delay this. We've waited a year. The supply crisis is a crisis at this point. There is not enough medicine, and there is no safe access. It's a right. I want to say again, this is a right, not a privilege, a right that these patients have to access safe medical cannabis. Thank you very much.
Okay. Again, that's Willie Ford from R. Greenleaf, and, and he's absolutely right. People like Willie and Len and other producers went and spoke to Dr. Red Award, who was the new Secretary of Health, and it just seems like nothing that they spoke about was taken as advice or input for these new rules. You know, I've spoken many times at the Department of Health, the public condition hearings, where they talk about new conditions like Huntington's and Parkinson's and other diseases. Some of them always, a lot of times they get recommended by the Advisory Board of Doctors, and then it goes up to the Health Department, Secretary of Health, to make the final decision, and they get turned down. Now, luckily enough, Parkinson's and Huntington's did get approved. It's the first two conditions in many, many years since Governor Martinez's administration took over the workings of this medical cannabis program. So we've asked for lots of things over the years, and we've given them input. We've told them we want to drop, we need to drop that second signature for chronic pain, and it's a waste of money and time. And we've told them that we need two- or three-year cards so that it'll lighten up the load on the Department of Health, it'll cost the patients less money, they don't have to see their doctors every year for, you know, hundreds of dollars to get recertified for, for this medicine. They've never taken our advice. And now, what I'd like to do is I'm going to play Peter St. Seer, who's the reporter for the Santa Fe Reporter, who interviewed Ken Grogel after the meeting was over. It was, again, like an eight-hour meeting, and I've watched the, the video of this many, many times, and it's fascinating. I, I want you to listen to this, but then when you get a chance, watch it. I want you to watch the video of Ken Grogel. It's quite an education to, to, to watch him speak. So here's nine minutes of Ken Grogel. Listen carefully, and you'll see where he's coming from. Ken Grogel and Peter St. Seer. Mr. Grogel, you just sat through almost eight hours of public comment. Your impression of what people were saying?
It was very encouraging for us. We're happy to see such a great turnout, and we're happy to hear the input that we received from all the various stakeholders.
And those stakeholders' input, how much weight will the department give that in finalizing rules?
We give it a great deal of weight. We use all the information, as the public hearing officer said. She's already been processing the information as it's currently come in. We've even went ahead and extended the timeframe for written comments to July 1, and we're very interested in continuing to hear from people, as well as what we gathered today.
And so, if you were to group together all the comments and kind of find an aggregate of some of the more pressing concerns for people that showed up today, it seems to me that patients are very concerned about the idea of cutting the number of plants they're able to grow at home. Your take on what you heard on that issue today?
I would agree with you, Peter, on that issue, absolutely. I think that was an important one. I also think
He's chuckling, he's laughing.
We anticipated there would be questions about things like fees, and the idea that we want to work towards ensuring that there's an adequate supply for patients, and they're able to have that available to them. So that was all part of the message that we heard today and will take with us as we continue to complete the process.
I, I think I was thinking more along the lines of, where did the idea to come, come up from to cut the number of plants that they're allowed to grow?
Well, the, the process of doing all this was, was a long and elaborate one with a lot of information, a lot of input. One of the things for me personally was the idea that I took a look at what was going on in other states that have medical cannabis programs. And the numbers that were, are offered up in the proposal are consistent with a great many of the states across the US.
Well, but folks here said that other growers in other states that have licenses are able to grow five, ten times more plants for significantly less annual fees.
Well, I'm not going to certainly question what other people are looking at or considering what they've read. And that was just one aspect of it, so.
Did law enforcement ask you to reduce the number of plants that people can grow at home? What was the motivation to be undercutting it?
Well, again, as I've said, there's the research we did on it, the input we got from people, we were looking at the program and its evolution, and so that's, that's how we came to this point. Now, obviously, we're going to go back and revisit that because we got a lot of strong input and feeling from the stakeholders today, which is, once again, exactly what we were looking for.
And the commercial producers, aware of the shortages in the state, the survey that was done last year by Dominic, say that it would be better to have the independent officer, Viper Kay, and look at just initially putting out rules to increase plant count to deal with the immediate shortages, and then maybe going back and opening up dialogue for the stakeholders on the other issues. Is that anything the department would consider?
I certainly heard that stated today, as you did, absolutely. Right now, we're in the middle of the proposed rule process, and we're going to continue with that process.
When do you anticipate, or have you given Ms. Hapka, is that how you pronounce her name, the independent hearing officer?
Hepka, I think it is.
Thank you. Have you given her deadline to give you her report?
No, no, this is in her hands. She's, she's operating under her timelines. We certainly want to keep this moving. It's important for everybody, as we heard today, to keep this on track and going forward and trying to reach a resolution so that we can release final rules and move forward then with the licensed nonprofit producer application process, which would unfold afterwards.
And the Health Secretary said that she may open up that process to up to a dozen new producers. Is it your intent to make sure that geographic zones in the state that aren't well-served are the top priorities for issuing those new licenses?
We haven't begun to discuss anything particular in that regard, Peter.
What is your response to the chatter that we hear? And I think it's a fair question because it's out there, and we all know it's out there, that these rules were designed to kill the program.
We absolutely disagree with that. I mean, just common sense tells you that we wouldn't be, you know, proposing increases in plant counts. We wouldn't be proposing adding additional nonprofit producers and all of that if, if that was the intention, and it certainly isn't by any stretch.
So the producers have a lawyer, and those lawyers say that these rules that were published by the Department of Health may have overstepped the department's authority. Do you think that you're within the scope of your rulemaking authority to impose annual registration fees on patients when, I guess, the state law that they showed me says that the department shall, and that key word "shall," issue a license as long as they provide certain elements, and there is no mention of a fee? So how are those fees justified?
Well, I guess I'd go back to your first question, and that would be my response, is that that's a legal question, and I'm not in a position to answer in that regard. In terms of fees themselves, we are a self-sufficient program, as everybody understands, and In terms of fees themselves, we are a self-sufficient program, as everybody understands, and as the industry evolves, and there are new products, new methods, new this, new that, we're responsible for being accountable and manage the program and its growth. And so, that's one of the reasons that fees are a necessary evil, if you will. How did you prepare for today's meeting? I'm not sure that I would have the stomach to sit through eight hours of people yelling and screaming and calling me names, and how were you able to cope with that today? Well, as I've told folks before, Peter, we're just excited that there's this kind of interest, and that people were willing to take the time out of their day to come up here and share with us, not only their verbal commentary, but also the written comments that we've received, and we've got a lot of them. And so, it's just really great to see that people are so passionate about this, and rightfully so, because we value it as a department as well.
Was that a miscalculation, though, that there wasn't maybe more dialogue, right or wrong? People here today said that the issue, that the rules were, in their view, developed in secret, behind closed doors. Do you have any regrets, and do you think that more stakeholders should have been at the table in developing them in the first place?
Well, there's always going to be the potential for second guessing, and I do realize that I wasn't here the last time this process was undertaken, and it was very early in the development of the New Mexico program. So, I would be reluctant to even comment on that because I don't have a personal perspective on the historical.
Well, but let's put that aside and separate. In this incident, incidents, should you have invited more stakeholders to the table to develop these rules, proposals?
Well, we did get input from people, as we said in our frequently asked questions, notification, and other things. We did get input, and we kept input, and we're constantly receiving input. We talked to patients every day, we talked to producers just about every day, we talked to everybody involved on a regular basis, and we take every conversation seriously. So I think we did grasp that information.
But, I mean, Dr. Genison, who's no longer on the advisory board, has friends on the board, and he said they weren't consulted.
Well, I'm not going to contradict his impression.
Well, I can't even think of one more because that just doesn't make sense to me.
Doesn't make sense to me, doesn't make sense to me. That was absolutely amazing. Now, you know, Peter's questions were fantastic, and again, please try to watch the video of this, it's very telling. If you ever saw a TV show called Lie to Me about facial expressions that you can read somebody, it's in poker faces and so forth, it's amazing. But nine minutes and 22 seconds is too long for an interview like that, so I did a little editing, and this is what I came up with. It's a work in progress. I, I promise that I'll finish it, but here's my version, and this is called Kenny and the Keys.
Mr. Grogel, you just sat through almost eight hours of public comment. Your impression of what people were saying?
We absolutely disagree with that. It's a legal question, and I'm not in a position to answer it.
Did law enforcement ask you to reduce the number of plants that people can grow at home? What was the motivation behind cutting it?
We're responsible. We're responsible. These rules were designed to kill the program. These rules were designed to kill the program. We're responsible for being accountable and manage the program and its growth. We did get input, and we kept input, and we're constantly receiving input. We did get input, and we kept input, and we're constantly receiving input. So, I would be reluctant to even comment on that. I'm not going to contradict his impression. I'm not going to contradict his impression. We're responsible for being accountable and manage the program and its growth.
Did law enforcement ask you to reduce the number of plants that people can grow at home?
One of the things for me personally, we haven't begun to discuss anything particular in that regard. We're responsible for being accountable and manage the program and its growth. We did get input, and we kept input, and we're constantly receiving input. We did get input, and we kept input, and we're constantly receiving input. Well, there's always going to be the potential for second guessing. I'm not going to contradict his impression. Well, I can't even think of one more because that just doesn't make sense to me.
Okay, we're back. We're going to close out the show in just a couple of minutes. If you'd like to call in right now, before we close out the show, you may. Otherwise, we're going to say goodnight. Leslie, any closing comments about your experience this week?
Wow, I've never felt so much passion, and so many people come together for a cause. Kind of, kind of makes me feel like when you guys were older back in the days, you know?
We were younger back in the days.
Yeah, back, yeah, watching you, you know what I mean.
Yes.
But, the only thing I would like to say is, I don't know if people know about them extending the reply date to July 1st.
Good point.
For people to please show their support and take a moment to share your thoughts, and write an email to the DOH. You can send it to medical.cannabis@state.nm.us.
Very good. Okay, we're going to pick up this call right here. Hi, David, you're live on the air, buddy, how are you?
I am good, Larry, how are you today?
Very good, my friend. Did you have a chance to listen to the show tonight?
You know, Larry, I just caught it at the last, last very part of it where you were replaying that awesome interview. I'm sorry, Saturdays are, are kind of tough, but I thought I would call in and just see how things are going.
Well, things are going well. You know, the Department of Health promised to put up the video and audio of the whole meeting by Wednesday or Thursday, and of course, it's still not up, so I played a whole bunch of clips, and, you know, Len Goodman and a bunch of people, just to give the audience a, a feeling of what it was like there at the meeting. And it was, it was, it was really quite something. I was very happy with the turnout.
Yes.
Give me your impressions of that day. I know you were there because we, we spent some time together.
Absolutely. Heartfelt is, is absolutely one of the first words that I would, would use. I was so impressed with, with the community that showed up, and with everybody that showed up, and the overwhelming support. I felt that like, for the first time in seven years, that the community is really joined together, and that people are really starting to get it. And then, you know, activism is no longer a, you know, kind of like a passive word that people use, everyone, "Oh, I'm an activist." I think that we totally saw hundreds of activists that were in force, and it just, it did my heart so good, it really did.
Well, this, this program is very personal to a lot of people, and, you know, just the, the veterans alone, just for them, I'm just so surprised that politics would come in between veterans and their health. It's, it's just, it's just terrible. It's, it's despicable.
It is, and you know, I, I was, I was doing some traveling a few weeks ago, and I was stuck at the Las Vegas Airport, Las Vegas, Nevada, and I, I smoked cigarettes, unfortunately. But anyway, I was, I was in the smoking lounge there in, in Las Vegas, and I had the opportunity to, to meet an awesome young man who was just coming back from deployment, and we struck up a conversation, and he started to tell me that, you know, he was just coming off of deployment, and he was dealing with a bunch of just god-awful situations, and, you know, and started telling me personal stories about what he was going through, and, and I just, knowing what we know and how medical cannabis helps our, our troops when they come back, and it's a wonderful, wonderful treatment for PTSD, I, I looked at him and I asked him what, what they were doing for him, and I said, "Well, you know, you don't ask, because if you do ask, you get ostracized, basically. You get called into question, and at the very best, they, they hand you, you know, obviously, the, the god-awful narcotics." So, I asked him, "What, what do you do in the meantime?" He said, "Well, you know, I take ibuprofen, and I try to deal with things, and you and I both know that that just, that, that doesn't, that doesn't work." And, and I was really just, I, I was flabbergasted at, at how little support that they were given, even if, you know, God forbid, I mean, they're, they're going through awful situations, and there is, there is literally nothing that they can do, other than to go outside of what they have available to them.
Right.
And this young man, it was like, "Well, no, I can't. It is absolutely, you know, not..." He, he was very, very supportive of cannabis, but for him personally, he couldn't do it because of the ramifications that he felt that would be imposed upon him if he did. And I, I really was just struck by that, and it was, was a big sense of hopelessness because, you know, you and I both know, and, and many, many of us know, that, that is, that is something that is totally helpful, and even if it doesn't help the individual, there, there's nothing gained or nothing lost.
Well, it, it certainly doesn't hurt, and, and the Hippocratic Oath is, you know, first do no harm, and cannabis certainly is that, that medicine that will do no harm. We, we know that it really is not going to mess anything up. So, that's what people need to learn, and they need to educate themselves, and you know, I've said it a million times, you know, we're, we're all pioneers right now in, in this time of freeing this plant that has taken so many years to, to get to this point, and we're going to run over these bumps in the road, you know, like Ken Grogel and Andrea Sundberg bumps, big bumps, and we have to get over them and set, get back up and, and make this thing better. It's just taking time, you know? It's been 45 years that I've been waiting for legalization, and, and we're going to get that. But you know what? The medical program, medical programs all over the states, and I think we're up to 23 now. New York just came on board in the last couple of days. I haven't read up on exactly what their program is going to be. I know for some reason Governor Cuomo was sort of sitting on his hands and not wanting people to smoke. I mean, it's just ridiculous.
I do believe it's an oil program.
Yeah, well, oil is great as long as they allow some THC in that oil, you know? It's, it's not just CBD, we know that, and so, so anyway, what I was just saying, David, was that, you know, we're, we're trying to push the right people in, in the, the right direction, you know? You and I have been around this stuff for a long time, and we've got experience, and it just takes time, you know? I thought we were making great headway in the 60s and, and, and the very early 70s, and then all of a sudden, we lost 40 years somehow. I, I don't know where it went. But we're on the, we're not on the cusp, we're, we're riding a wave right now, and, and it's an amazing situation and story with legalization just a few miles up the road in Colorado, and hopefully in the next couple of years, maybe we'll get that here. It, we're going to run, you know, it's going to be tough, it's a tough fight, but education to the, the naysayers, you know, the Republicans, the, the right-wing conservatives, the religious right, all those people need to be educated, and so do law enforcement, and so do doctors, and so do people that work in the medical cannabis programs. Everyone needs an education, we're all learning right now, and I, I think that we're, we're making headway. And I think Monday, the people, the patients of New Mexico made headway. I really think they did.
I would agree wholeheartedly, Larry, and, and again, wholeheartedly, and I, I can't, I can't tell you how, how, how much good it did my heart when I pulled up early, got a parking spot at the DOH, and got there and saw the line that was already there at 7:30 in the morning. It was, it was incredible.
Absolutely. Well, David, it was good to see you, I hope to see you soon. Thanks for calling in.
You bet.
And have, have a wonderful weekend, buddy.
Thanks, Larry. We'll talk to you later.
Bye-bye. David White, everybody. Well, what we learned on Monday, we learned a lot, but one of the things was something I have always known or felt, and that's patients first, not law enforcement. It's all about the patients, and until the people running this program realize that, we have a fight, and we're going to stay here and we're going to fight for you guys and for ourselves. I want to thank my guests, Leslie Jowers, in-studio guest, Bob Boylan, 420 Web Design, David White, and of course, I want to thank my two radio mentors, both with the initials H-S, thank you for your inspiration. We'll be back next Saturday night at 7:00 PM Mountain Time. If you wanted to listen to any of our old archives, you can go to LSlove88 on YouTube, you can go to timeforhemp.com, you can go to our website, which is under construction right now, we're changing it, but check it out. Don't forget, Wednesdays with Lariwana. Every Wednesday on canowanaby.com, I give a five-minute report on recreational and medical marijuana. Thank everybody who came out on Monday. It was amazing. Feel well, everybody.